Good evening. My name is Nick Sturgeon, President of the Speedway Town Council. It is November 10th, 2025 at 7:09. I call this meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Continuing on with introductions, to my far right is Town Manager Grant Kleinhines.
Good evening.
Next to him is Councilor Sarah Gardner.
Good evening.
Next to her is Councilor Sean Harold.
Good evening.
Having a little bit of a vocal problem tonight, so bear with me here. To my far left is Town Attorney Ted Halting.
Good evening.
Next to him is Town Clerk Treasurer Philip Faust.
Good evening.
Next to him is Councilor Vincent Ablett.
Good evening.
And to my immediate left is Council Vice President Jason Delisle.
Good evening.
Minutes, approval of minutes of the October 27th, 2025 meeting.
Make a motion to approve.
A second.
Any comments, questions, discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 5-0. Item three, memorandum, approval of memorandum of administrative session of the Speedway Town Council on October 27th, 2025.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments, questions, discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 5-0. Item four, approval of pay request number three.
Okay, I think I hear something.
From Oak Hole Incorporated for the Crawfordsville Road pedestrian improvement project. Grant.
Yeah, so this is just voice approval of these large payments. This one is in the amount of $378,635.29 and represents payment number three. There is still roughly $1.4 million remaining on the contract and to be paid upon completion of the project by the first of December.
Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
A second.
Any comments, questions, discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 5-0. Item five, proposed change order number two for the Crawfordsville Road pedestrian improvement project. Grant.
Yes, so this is a proposed change order in the amount of $47,079 even for the installation of a new manhole concrete structure on the north side of Crawfordsville located to the west of Thornton's gas station. That storm sewer, which is owned by the city of Indianapolis, drains basically the entire Bricksmore parking lot and most properties located to the west of that area up to High School Road. We have lined or re-lined the bottom of that because we've put a heavy sidewalk on top of that. We felt the manhole being included allows better and improved access to maintain and upkeep that line. There was about a run of, I think it was 1,400 feet without a manhole, and you typically have a manhole every 800 feet. So, we are under budget on the project to this point. In fact, this change order number two will still keep us about $7,000 under the original bid. The first change order was a large deduction. We recommend this. We feel it's important and will add to the safety. Our workers typically maintain and clean. Those on the behalf of the city of Indianapolis, they own the line. We have fought that fight over the past couple of years, trying to get them to contribute to the project, to no avail. And to do the project, we had to do this, get the grants and move forward. So I'll answer any questions that you might have, but we do recommend approval of this change order.
I'll make a motion for the approval.
I'll second.
Any comments, questions, discussion?
Grant, how much money has Indianapolis spent on this road at all?
On this project? Zero.
Zero amount.
Yep.
Are they aware of all the money that we're spending here?
Yes. We contacted them when we applied for the grant almost five years ago. They provided us a support letter. It did not identify a dollar amount, but they said in there that they would support the project. We have tried...
By writing a letter or something?
Yeah, we've tried numerous times with our contacts to get it included in the budget, and they have failed to do so.
It's just disheartening that, you know, this is a property that the city of Indianapolis owns and is failing to maintain and which is a key road in the town of Speedway. So, you know, we're not going to neglect it, you know, but it, you know, it's just a shame that we've had to wait so long just for a light at Kohl's and safety, pedestrian crossings. I mean, this is, this has not just happened in the last 10 years. This has been going on forever, you know, from that end of it. That's all I want to say about it.
Any other comments, questions, discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 5-0. Item six, resolution number 2025-18, a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Speedway, Indiana, authorizing a special purchase. Grant.
So this is for the purchase of, I think it's 45, correct Chief? 45 tasers from Axon as a sole source provider of this. We have adopted the attached, or put together the attached resolution identifying the reasoning behind this. There are cost savings, there are interoperability considerations to staying with taser, all of that training. We've trained on these for years. The resolution allows us to enter this contract, purchase these pieces of equipment. I'll answer any questions that you might have. If you remember, we did body cameras at the last meeting. This is a second part for a major capital improvement for the police department. But this is our non-lethal way of diffusing situations when there are crimes committed or aggressive persons. They don't use them all that often, but it's something that we have to have at our disposal. We have a policy. The officers are trained on it. We have insurance to cover that. It's something that we, and we need to do this sole source to save, save money and get the product that we need.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2025-18.
I'll second it.
Any comments, questions, discussion?
I mean, this is very important because from a risk standpoint, the town is exposed if our officers has only one way of delivering self-defense. And I think this would be a very good, and this is a very good, we should need to keep it updated regularly.
And I think also, the thing that people don't remember is tasers really lessen injuries to our officers and to the parties that are breaking the law. There are non-lethal means of diffusing situations when they're out of control. And that's what we pay our police officers to do, is to maintain order and civility. And they don't use these often, but they have to have them.
And Grant, how long do these typically last? How often do we purchase these, Chief?
Our last taser was purchased in 2005.
So 20 years.
We've utilized those for about 20 years. We just can't get parts anymore and the batteries, we can't replace batteries, so.
Yeah.
We've got our money out of the asset before, I guess.
Yeah, thanks Chief.
And the expense is, it's like $220,000.
Yeah, $482.
Yep. So it's a fairly large purchase.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 5-0. Item seven, resolution number 2025-19, approval of transfer of real estate to Indianapolis Department of Public Works for the Eagle Creek Greenway Project. Grant.
So this resolution will transfer a very small parcel of property owned by the town. That's, if you look at the exhibit, I know that the question has been asked, where is this parcel? It is on adjacent to 10th Street, west of Whitcomb. It's basically where our water plant, you enter into the plant. There's a small triangular, almost parking lot-like gravel area. That's basically where this taking is. We are recommending giving this Indianapolis because they are constructing the Eagle Creek Greenway. I think it's phase one of an ultimate two or three-phase project, which will provide further connectivity for pedestrian use to Crawfordsville, also to 10th Street and to the BNO Trail. So to me, this is our way of contributing to that. I would like to have reciprocation when we ask for capital improvement dollars to their large, their roads.
I'll second that.
That's, that's my, yeah, that's my statement on that, so. We've done way more than letters of support, but, so anyway, if I had to guess what the value of this property is, less than $10,000. It's a very small negligible piece of property that's located in the right of way. You really can't do much with it. So. And they need this done so that they can go to bid. They're getting ready to open bids and they want this all wrapped up. Thank you Ted for communicating with their legal counsel and getting this done so rapidly. We appreciate that.
Make a motion to approve resolution 2025-19.
I'll second it.
Any comments, questions, discussion?
Isn't this where we had our major break?
I mean, it's in that same area.
Yep. Right along the side of it.
Yes, yep. But it, there's nothing really going to be improved upon it. It's not going to affect any of our...
Right.
It's just a right of way because there's a portion of the trail that encroaches on it.
Will that trail go underneath 10th Street?
I am not exactly sure how it gets under 10th Street. I don't believe it goes under just yet.
Okay, alright.
I can get an answer to that, though. I've seen the plans. I just don't remember off the top of my head.
Understood.
I'm getting old.
Grant, if we don't just give this to them, would they have to purchase this from us or how?
Yeah, I mean, the next step would be us asking them to compensate us for the parcel.
Or we're just trying to be good citizens?
Yes, yes. I mean, I think we see Indianapolis as a partner. I'm not sure they see us as a partner, but that, that's, that's my take on it.
Yeah.
I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Is there a motion?
We're having a motion.
Oh, a motion, sorry. Any other discussion, comments, question? Alright, hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 5-0. Item eight, ordinance number 1418 regarding additional appropriations for the Speedway Public Library, our first reading. Philip.
Thank you. If you might recall from our budget hearings, the library has a, an extensive HVAC project that they budgeted for next year. This $500,000 would be for the first part of the work that they'd like to go ahead and get started this year, and then they'll be financing an additional part of that. Darcy Boer is in the audience on behalf of the library. If there are additional questions, she's been very patient with us. We had originally scheduled the public hearing for the meeting we had to cancel, and so I thank her for bearing with us and bearing with me on that. Hopefully you will open this for a public hearing and then close the public hearing and then, if you're willing, you could also go ahead and move to approve this in, in one session and then vote on that as well.
Alright, I will open this up for a public hearing at 7:23. Would anybody like to address us? Alright, hearing none, I will close the public hearing at 7:24. Is there a motion for unanimous consent to do this in one reading tonight?
I'll make a motion for that, for unanimous consent on the first reading.
A second.
Any comments, questions, discussion? Alright, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of passing this in one reading with unanimous consent, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes 5-0. Now I will call for a motion...
To approve.
To approve it.
Make a motion to approve ordinance 1418.
I'll second it.
Any comments, questions, discussion? Alright, hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of approving ordinance number 1418, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 5-0. Item number nine, memorandum of understanding between the Town of Speedway and Speedway Public Library regarding group health plan. Philip.
Thank you. So at our last meeting, you approved our insurance quotes for next year for health, vision and dental. This will be now the third year of this memorandum between us and the library, but we've had library members on our health plan going back years before that as well. This just outlines that since we're the self-insurer here, instead of them paying premiums to Anthem, they're going to pay into our self-insurance fund the equivalent of those premiums. And so the, really the only change here is to reflect the increased rates for them. The library board did approve it.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
A second.
Any comments, questions, discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 5-0. Item 10, and bear with me, it's a mouthful, ordinance number 1419, establishing job and salary wages and compensation to be paid certain offices, positions and jobs within the Town of Speedway, Indiana for the year 2026 and repealing all other ordinances or parts thereof in conflict there within and asking for first and second, or just first reading tonight.
And so this is our annual salary ordinance for 2026. It reflects changes that were agreed upon in our collective bargaining agreements with both police and fire. Generally, it also, for most other employees, reflects a 2.5% cost of living increase. And there are the addition of a couple of positions as well. The main text of it deals with a lot of random issues, longevity pay, various accreditation pay, 457 pay, clothing allowance, et cetera. Happy to try to entertain any questions you might have, but if we're doing just first reading today, there's no vote required, so just discussion?
Any discussion? Alright, moving on, item 11, a motion to approve payment to Hansard Polygraph Services for pre-employment screening services for the police department. And this was me, there was a bit of an issue with a check that was first issued, and I am asking for approval to reissue the check for $500 to Paul Hansard's Polygraph Services.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second? Hearing none, the motion fails. We'll move on. Item 12, approval of claims and utility adjustments. Philip.
Thank you. I do have requests for both this evening. The main town claims spanned October 23rd, 2025 through November 5th, 2025. They are on 13 pages in total, $1,623,083.22. There's an additional small set of claims for October 22nd, 2025. This is for our self-insurance fund. That's just one page and it totals $30,144.87. Then there's two pages of adjustments spanning October 23rd through November 5th, 2025. That's for four customers. And I would request your approval of all of those.
I'll make a motion to approve.
A second.
Any comments, questions, discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 5-0. Alright, moving on to reports. Alright, moving on to reports from department supervisors. For, in for Cheryl tonight is Grant.
I just have a couple of announcements that are in regard to communications. The fifth annual holiday food drive started last week. It is, it runs from November the 5th through December the 12th, and we are collecting for three food pantries this year located within Speedway. Always grateful to provide and collect those food items from residents, from businesses, from the union, from town employees and others. And please give, open your heart, this is a tough year, it's always tough. We hope to break our record. I think last year we had somewhere around 7,000 items. We would love to get more than that this year, so we don't have 7,000 quite yet, so we need, we need to get some more donations. You will also notice that flags were put up on Main Street for Veterans Day, which is next Tuesday.
Tomorrow.
I'm sorry, tomorrow, next Tuesday, tomorrow.
See, I'm.
Completely correct.
I don't know what today is, frankly, gotta be honest. But those were put up, I appreciate Rob and his employees doing that. We used to put those in the roundabout, now that's not necessarily possible with the construction. So last year and this year, we put them on Main Street and I think it looks really good. So remember the veterans in your lives and thank them for their service. I think that's all that I have for Cheryl. She would have included more.
Yeah, and just a reminder, the parade, Veterans Day Parade in front of the junior high and elementary schools tomorrow.
And I don't remember the time for that, 9:30.
Yeah, 9:30.
Apologize, getting caught up here. Next up is economic development. Kyle.
Thank you, councilors. Speaking of roundabout, roundabout is going really well. If you all have been by, we've got plantings going in. We're going to keep going, keep moving on that. Everything seems to be pretty much on schedule, still working through some things, but overall can't be happier with the project. I think it's looking really well. We've got the RFP for the 16th Street corridor, that dropped November 3rd. We'll be getting proposals due back by December 5th. We'll be working with the IMPO and our selection committee to get a contractor, the first couple of weeks of the, of January is when we'll have somebody under contract. That will run through September 30th of 2026. We need the study done by then so that we can turn around, use that study to apply for federal grants to actually do the infrastructure work. This is just the study to show what we can do and what we should do with 16th Street, from 16th and Main Street, all the way down to 16th and Mickley. We will be having, speaking of 16th Mickley, we'll be having the RFP for that go out, hopefully November 14th, finishing that up and should be, have, get that out soon. That will be out for a little longer, bigger development. We want to make sure we get the right project in there. So that'll be due probably, what'd I say, probably in mid-December and we'll probably pick somebody by February for that. And we will also have a RFP for the right of way, right in, right outside of Lindy on Main Street. They want to do a memorial to Carl G. Fisher as part of the centennial, so we're going to work with them on doing some landscape improvements right there. Main Street design, we have a meeting this week with Kizer to go over those designs. They've taken some initial feedback from our street department and applied those, we're going to go over those. We'll have a contractor, under contract for that by the end of the year and work will start June 1st. I think that estimated timeline now is to be completed the end of December, if I'm remembering correctly, don't quote me on that. Other than that, last thing I got is the TIFRE statement, we're working with Barnes and Thornburg and we hope to bring that to you by the end of the year as well.
Any questions?
I got one for Kyle. You know, far as Main Street, when's the work going to be done on that?
Yeah, so I think we'll, I think right now the estimated timeline is towards the end of December of 26, but I can definitely for sure get a better feeling for that timeline after we get with them and finish out the design.
It's important to remember, construction will not start till after the race.
Right.
Sometime in June.
Right.
And then they'll, we'll have events that will hinder construction. We've got our centennial, IMSA, all those other events, so we'll also have some hindrance in the construction also, which I think we're adding time to that as well.
Yeah, it's definitely challenging in order to get it all done. And, you know, I'll be glad to, you know, and definitely take a look at the scope of it and what they're, what they're proposing from that standpoint.
Absolutely.
Do we have any performance bonds planned for this work?
Every contract we have has a performance bond. There's limitations on that.
Right, we need to tighten.
What the law says, but.
But we've got to tighten up, you know, from job, you know, there's, when time they start to when it's going to be finished, we need to nail that down.
Sure.
I mean, we're talking about a lot of businesses on Main Street and they could really throw a monkey wrench into a lot of them, you know, for as restaurants.
That, that will be key to put into the specifications so that it's clear what the expectation is.
Absolutely.
And that may or may not affect the price. I think that's always the, anytime you put those kind of standards, that may affect price.
It always is.
Yeah, I'm.
I mean, it's going to cost you one way or another.
Sure.
You know, either you're going to have, you know, all your businesses really, you know, upset with you, or you're going to be upset with it. You know, you got to have some type of hammer with the contractors, not only to produce a quality product that, that we're proud of at the end of the day, but also it has to be done in a timely manner and, because it's costing money every time that they're not out on the job site.
Yep. Yeah, we could definitely look into that and see what's worked for other communities in the past and see if we can't implement some of those same standards into.
Yeah, I'd like to see those.
We also have liquidated damages, that's typically a dollar value per day that the contract has exceeded. We have enforced that, like on the sign, the gateway sign, we enforced that.
Mm-hmm.
That was about 30 days late and that, that ended up being about $20,000 that they had to pay us back. They deducted that from their final payment, but.
Right.
So we've had those kinds of things in the past and we'll have the same.
And they were a good contractor.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We'll have the same thing with the two contractors we have on both of the jobs now. If they go beyond the date that we've given them, there will be liquidated damages.
Yeah.
Alright, anything else for Kyle? Alright, thank you.
Thanks, Kyle.
Alright, next up, police chief Upchurch.
Good evening, council. On October 24th, we swore on our newest officer, Sean Winton. Sean has begun his training, he's set to go to the police academy in January of this year. Our current officer at the police academy has completed the eighth week, so he's halfway through, which is always a good, a good sign. So, but he's doing well at the police academy and we expect him, his graduation is December the 13th, so we'll get him back and put him in the FTO program. And for those that have an interest, we're still currently accepting applications for patrol officer. You can go to the town's website and create a pre-application. We have one opening at this point, so we are looking for good qualified candidates. And this past week, our entire staff, police officers, dispatchers, all completed the recertification of CPR, so that's one of the many training sessions that we do throughout the year. I'll touch base, we're through the 10th month of the year, so I'll touch base on some of our crime stats for the year. We are down in all of our major crime except for two categories. The categories, we have a sliding increase, burglary, last year, this time we had 14, this year we have 16. And in our batteries, assault batteries, we are up just slightly by about 7%, but our robberies are down 33%. Our vehicle thefts are down 36% and our thefts are down 23%. And thus far this year, we have not had any homicides. So our sexual assaults are down by 75% this year. So, and we have issued 5,164 citations thus far this year, so.
Where's that compared to last year?
We're pretty much right on track for where we were last year. So the, the officers are doing good work and, and when we compare our crime stats, we have trended down probably the last five or six years. So we could be down altogether by the time the, by the time we get to the end of December. So we, we hope we do, but right now everything's trended down, so.
I was going to say, from a comparison with the other agencies in the county on the traffic enforcement, where do we compare there?
We've done some comparisons and, and we write a lot of tickets. We, the other agencies, they make traffic stops and I don't fault the IMPD, they're, they're a very good agency, they're just down in their numbers. And I just don't know how much traffic they do. I think that lends itself to, to some of the issues that we have here. And we, we've gotten to the point where we really issue traffic citations, we don't issue a lot of warnings anymore. So, I don't know that warnings were doing us any good, so, but we've, we are usually at the end of the year somewhere between about six and 75, 100 tickets by the end of the year, so.
Yeah, I was just going to make a quick comment on the negative downward trend on crime statistics, that's definitely what we're looking for and.
Yes.
You know, I'm wondering if perhaps the Town of Speedway is getting a reputation that this is not the place that you want to be doing some of that.
We hope so.
And I think with some of the investments in the flock cameras, for example.
Yes.
Hopefully that's helping with that perception. So just kind of want to get your thoughts on that and see if you agree.
And we, we still will pursue violators and some agencies don't do that anymore. And our goal is for those folks that have a stolen vehicle or they come through town and are doing things that they shouldn't, we will still, we'll still pursue. And we rely on our supervisors to make sure those don't get to a dangerous level. We always take time of day, whether the schools are letting out and we, we rely on our supervisors to terminate those if they're going to become dangerous. So our goal is, we hope those folks out there are like, hey, we'll just bypass Speedway if, and I think that's where the cameras help. So we, we do, we have a lot of, our pursuits are up and a lot of that I attribute to the, to the flock cameras, a lot of stolen vehicles, so.
Any other?
Yeah, great job.
Thank you. Thanks, chief. Next up, fire, Chief Fishburne.
Evening, council. So I'll give you some stats first, through the end of October, we've done 3,116 total runs, that's up about 100. We were just over 3,000 last year through October, so our October runs were 305, 59% of that was EMS or assist citizens, 41% were fire or other investigations, so. Academy news, Chief Milhorn had a meeting today with the combined academy that we're going to be starting a candidate in, in January. That's going to go off with Pike, Zinesville, Lebanon and Speedway. Be about 17 or 18, they're still getting final numbers. We're going to hopefully have one in that, as long as we can get him through all of the process with perf and all of that, which we're ahead of the game on that. So as long as all of his stuff comes back and we can get a conditional offer, we'll actually have a guy starting in academy in January and one of the young men that's in the current academy, which is a combined academy with Plainfield, Avon, Brownsburg and Speedway, which we're very, we are so much more involved in that one because we've got two guys and it's closer and Chief Cheshire's an estate instructor, so they've really, you know, it doesn't, doesn't cost us anything, which is amazing, but we, we contribute people or we may buy materials that they're going to burn, but the cost to us is, we are so fortunate to be able to do that. One of the young men in that academy, we get on January the 3rd because he's already an EMT, so he'll do his fire school and then we get him on the streets, which is really important. The other young man will graduate the academy in March, I don't know the date yet, but I'll get it to you for you to swear in and I'll send it to all of you that might want to attend. I don't think they're going to plan it on spring break like last year was, so, I think they learned a lesson there. And then the, the young man starting the academy in January will actually graduate sometime in June. So after March, we'll only be down one, one person and that'll be somebody in the academy, so we'll be fully staffed, knock on wood, so. Solomon has been released from the hospital, he was released about seven days after his accident. He is walking with a walker, doing total rehab. Six or seven guys have stepped up, yeah, he's.
He's walking with a walker already?
Oh, yeah.
Wow.
Yeah. It, you know, it's one of those injuries that the younger you are, you know, the quicker you can get back on your feet. I mean, I'm not saying he's running any Indy marathons, but we really expect him, the doctors have said at the longest four months. And he had, he had some sick time and he had some vacation time because he had just gotten back from the basic training. And several guys have stepped up just to work a shift for him without him having to pay back. So it's been good for our department in that way, seeing guys, you know, rally around him and we still continue to get gifts from citizens that just walk in, they don't, it's anonymous and we get that to he and his wife or, you know, gift cards or just cards asking, you know, wishing him well, so very appreciative of that. And we are finishing up our evaluations of all of our people for Nikki and I'm evaluating my staff, I've sent myself a bow to Grant, so just kind of all the year end things, we'll be starting to pick vacation days for next year here in about a week. It takes a while to get that all navigated and we have to have that done by January 1st, so. Have any questions at all?
Alright.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
And then subbing in for Tammy of Parks and Rec, Grant.
I have three items from Tammy. Light the Night is Wednesday, December the 3rd, 5:30 to 7:30 at Delara. Santa will arrive promptly at 5:30 unless delayed because of weather or delivering presents or something else, but that's pretty early. Parks will be offering the train, trackless train rides again, $5, and then Delara is offering a discount on their simulators at the newly opened sim garage during the Light the Night event. I'm not sure what they normally charge or what the discount is, but they are offering that discount. The Parks Department also received an award for a grant of $35,000 for the fitness court improvements at the Parks, for the Parks Improvement Projects, so that was good. They applied for 30,000 and they actually got 35,000, which is great. And Tammy is also planning an elves workshop, which she does annually. Kids will learn how to make gifts, write cards, wrap those gifts for someone. That will be in December, but she has yet to finalize a date and time. There will be flyers sent to schools when that is finalized in the next couple of weeks and that'll be a good event as always.
Alright, any questions? Alright, last but not least, Public Works, Brad Sloan.
Good evening, council.
Evening.
We'll start with the street department. The street department started treating roads over the weekend for our nice little snow event that we had. They are busy preparing the equipment for winter operations, street sweeping and two ongoing road projects. At the wastewater treatment plant, the plant treated 105 million gallons for the month of October. The permitting application has started for the CSO project, getting equipment ready for snow removal. On the, the energy savings project, everything is on schedule, all gas lines have been installed and spliced in. We did receive our air permit from IDM, so we're a go on that. And the project should be ready to go in December. The last manhole was lined for the manhole project on October 14th. At the water department, the plant treated 52 million gallons for, or 62 million gallons for October. Wells and tanks have been winterized, the distribution crew changed out 180 meters for the month of October. That's all I have.
Alright, any questions?
Great job on the snow removal.
They do a good job, those guys do a good job.
That's a test, that was just a, really a test for the future to come.
There you go.
Yeah. Alright, thanks, Brad.
Thank you.
Very early.
Everybody have a good Thanksgiving.
You too.
It's sort of like a trust, test track.
Yeah.
See how they work.
All right, Town Manager Report, Grant.
So I have three items this evening. We already discussed this earlier, but the Speedway Municipal Center will be closed tomorrow in observance of Veterans Day. Telecommunications, police, fire, water and wastewater will still be on duty because the plants have to operate and, and roads need to be kept safe. But administrative staff basically will be off tomorrow. The town also applied for a community crossings matching grant program for Phase 2 of 25th Street, which will be from Parkwood to High School Road. The estimated cost on that project is about 1.4 million dollars. We applied for 700,000 and change from the community crossing matching grant program. Nick signed the letter a couple of weeks ago. We will hear over the next couple of months. That design is nearing finalization. We would love to bid that in January so that we could open those bids and get that construction started next summer. So that, that'll be a, a good project. Speed limits, I know that our resident is here again this evening. There is no formal action that has been taken. I have called a couple of communities. I've sent out an email to the listserv that we are a member of. I've received a couple, it, it ranges everywhere. Every different community is different. I have also asked Rob, because not all of our speed limits are posted in town. I think the rule is that if you don't see it posted, there's a certain default speed limit depending on what type of area you're in. We don't have 1,000 signs out all over the place. I've asked him how many we might have to change and what that cost would be so that if the council decides to do something or make a change that you would have that information. Those signs range anywhere from 50 to $75 apiece. So I, I have no idea how many we, Rob's working on that. I hope to have that in the next week. So that's what I have on that. We would have to go, if we made a change, we'd have to go through an ordinance process. Town attorney would have to approve that. It would be an amending ordinance to our, I think it's called the traffic code and that would have to be amended by the council. I don't know if there's a public hearing requirement for that, but that would be something we would do if we so choose over the next couple of months. So those are my three items. I have spoken enough tonight. I have nothing else for you. I will answer any questions you might have.
Any questions or?
That's right. Not next week.
Grant, no questions about the items that you, that you just reported on, but is there anything we can share about the, the current 25th Street project on timelines or any updates you might have?
Sure, sure. So the, the final completion is estimated to be that second weekend in December. They have, the base layer of asphalt has been put down. The intermediate course of asphalt has been put down. They are now finalizing the driveway approaches and the sidewalks on both sides. I, I did not check today, Sean, about where they stand on that, but our understanding is that they are on schedule with what they have done. They've worked a couple of Saturdays over the past two, three weeks. They are getting to that point. We, we actually hope to open the traffic a little more soon. I know it's been opened a little bit, but once that driveway approach stuff is done and the sidewalks are done, we think we could open that to final traffic. Now, the final phase would be the bait, the, the final coat of asphalt. That really has to be done by that second week of December because asphalt plants close. When it starts to get cold, they, they don't make asphalt because it's not needed anymore. So they understand what that timeline is. We have liquidated damages clauses and then they would come back in the spring for seeding, final grading. You can't plant grass seed in December. It doesn't make a lot of sense. So that is the tentative timeline. The Crawfordsville Road Project is on a similar timeline. As you know, the lanes have been restricted for the past two weeks. We hope that by the end of November, around Thanksgiving, that all will be opened up and then that project is supposed to be done the first week of December. We will have one small part in front of Arby's and White Castle that will have to be held over. We are still working on the right-of-way. I know that we have filed with the court a request to assign appraisers. I think they would probably hopefully do that in the next couple of months and we can finish that buying and then that contractor will have to come back probably in March or April to do final grading, that small portion of sidewalk, and then that project will be wrapped up. That shouldn't affect traffic at all, though, whatever they have to do in the spring. So.
Yep, perfect. Thank you.
I got one question for you, Grant. On the connection to the P and E.
Yes.
You know, right there, is it, are we taking care of that?
Yeah, that, that's a.
Is that part of that?
If you drive by there, you see that they've actually grubbed out.
Yeah.
The base.
Yeah.
That's just one of the sections that they need to finish.
So then they're gonna come back and asphalt it then, or?
Well, that, that will be done, we hope, by that first week of December.
Okay.
So in about the next 30 days.
Great, that's a great addition.
Yeah, they've, they've made good progress. They just, they had a couple of weeks off because we have had right-of-way issues with, I'm gonna say it, Brixmore.
Right.
If we'd have wrapped that all up about a month ago, they would probably really be close to finishing. Unfortunately, that's, right-of-way always causes problems. I've been doing this for 30 years, never had a project that went perfectly. Right-of-way is always a thorn.
Keeps attorneys busy.
Yeah, it does. And fed, I think.
Anything else for Grant? All right, moving on to reports from councilors. Sarah.
Nothing for me tonight.
Sean?
Nothing further for me tonight.
Vince?
I think, just a couple of things. I, I think it's really great that we have our street department out putting flags up and celebrating Veterans Day. I think that needs to be done more often within the town of celebrating the veterans and the contributions that they've done to our society as a whole. And we need to recognize that. And I think when you see all those flags flying and, and this year we weren't able to put them around the roundabout, but I think anything along Crawfordsville Road or whatever would be nice too, so. Kudos to the team who put all those flags up.
Yeah. Just in case no one knows, I love history. I don't know if you know this, but Veterans Day is always celebrated on November the 11th. Do you know why? On the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month of the year was the armistice for World War I in 1918. So it's always on the 11th, right? That could be a Monday, Tuesday, whatever, but it's a, it's a remembrance to the sacrifice of those veterans and that war. But it's to all veterans.
Yeah.
So anyway, kinda cool. I was over in Europe a little while ago and went to the Palace of Versailles. They have removed the rail car. Adolf Hitler removed that. I was really hoping to see something like that. That would have been cool, but that was awesome.
Yeah.
Anything else?
No, that's all I got. Thank you.
Jason?
Yeah, just one quick comment on item number 11 on our agenda today. We didn't really get a chance to vote or address that, but I just wanted to make a quick comment that unfortunate situation, really appreciate all the work that Hansard Polygraph has done for the town and for our police department, but there is an ongoing investigation right now and that's why I felt like it was not worth a vote to cover that tonight. So just wanted to, like I said, we didn't get a chance to kinda talk through that or vote on it, but that's at least my rationale.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
All right, and just happy birthday to the United States Marine Corps, 250 years. Ooh, raw devil dogs and semper Fi. Happy Veterans Day and I'll call this meeting adjourned.